Very good. Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting of October 13th. Ma'am, would you please roll call?
Sure thing. Mr. Shylan?
Present.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Ms. Case Snook? Ms. Reclu?
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Present.
Mr. West?
Here.
And Mr. Cannell?
Here.
Okay, we have seven council members present, one absent.
Very good. Thank you. You'd rise with me for the invocation. Pastor Bruce Wayes will be with us. If you'd lead us, we'd appreciate it.
I'll be grateful. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for all of us for the two firefighters killed in line of duty last evening in Kansas City. Our Father in Heaven, we give you thanks for the blessings of this day and for the quiet of this moment as we remember two servants who, in the line of duty, saving others, lost their own lives. And we just pray for their families, for the community they served, and we pray for the peace and comfort that only God can bring to their lives. We thank you for the community we live in and the many who serve us and care for us. We thank you, Lord, for this wonderful city where we can work and raise our families and live each day in comfort and in peace. I pray, Lord, for the city government here, for the mayor and council persons, the administrators, and all those who lead this city. And especially, Lord, I pray for our public safety officers, both police and fire, our EMTs, and those who do heroic work every day to offer us the lifestyle that we're able to live. I pray for the work that will be done tonight in this place, the discussions that are held, the decisions that are made. First of all, asking you, Lord, to give approval, and I pray, Lord, that as we work together, we work to further this community and to honor you. I pray, Lord, for those that are associated with the city that have ongoing prayer needs. They would include but not be limited to Mayor Benton, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shylan, Mr. Laswell, Gabriel Polston, Chief Myers, and any other that I did not mention. We pray your blessings on them. Thank you for your love tonight and for the strength and the grace that you provide us all. We pray this and agree upon it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
At the beginning of every council meeting, we set time aside for those who'd like to share a concern with the council to do that. And we just ask that you come forward, give us your name and your address, and limit your comments to five minutes. And this evening, I've asked the clerk to put a timer on all presentations, so she'll let you know for sure if you're going over your five minutes. Okay? So at this time, if anyone's present who'd like to share with council, please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Todd Gray, Vice President, Full Professional Firefighters, Local 2945. I've got a little handout here. I wanted to do a formal request and dates that we would be available to resume negotiations. So I'd like to hand those out to you. You can just see on there that there are some dates that were available and that hope that you guys will agree to resume negotiations. And if nothing else, give us an idea of what was in the MOU that you guys did not agree with. On a positive note, I would like to say that last week was Fire Prevention Week. We went to all the schools in the city of Fulton, talked to kindergarten to second grade. It was about, I think it was around 740 students that we talked to. We had a little girl that listened to us on the evening of Tuesday after we talked to her class that morning and talked about the importance of 911, having a meeting place so if there is a fire in your house and when you exit, you do not go back in. So once you leave, you stay out. And she did everything that we asked her to do in class. She had a cooking fire in her home, and she got out. She went to her meeting place, and she stayed out even though that she had a guinea pig that she was, that was still inside and she was a little nervous about. But one of our firefighters went in and got the guinea pig for her and calmed her down. One of the things that we also discuss that a lot of the parents like is that we ask them to clean their room every night before they go to bed. And the reasoning behind that is, is to make our job easier as firefighters when we're going in searching for them and their job easier that if they do have a fire late at night, that they can get out easier. And so the parents really appreciate that part of the discussion also. But I just wanted to commend Ms. Battle on paying attention. She's a first grader at Bartley Elementary, and I'm glad that she followed the rules and did what she was supposed to do. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Does anyone else who'd like to come forward? Again, just ask for your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes.
My name is Bartley Gray. Yes, that is my son, and I'm proud of him. I was informed that at the last meeting, I came across you council persons and you Mr. Mayor as attacking. That was not my intent, and if you felt that, I do apologize to you all. I know you can only vote based on the information that you are given. I know you all have outside jobs, and you can't always research. You count on one individual to do the research for you. So when you're given the wrong information, that's not your fault. But I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Does anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Good evening. William Meyer. I live here in Fulton on Old Jesse Road. Harold with the firefighters as well. I just, I've been wanting to, I grew up in this town, going on 30 years now, and I just don't understand some of the things going on anymore. I don't understand how we can get new SUVs for our police, a Mercedes-Benz ambulance, and even though, yes, 90% of it's been by a grant, but we can still come with 300 grand to work on the airport that does nothing more than just store a farmer's crop duster. But we can't fix 20-plus-year-old equipment for our firefighters when our houses burn We can't make sure they have the proper money to put food on the table for their kids. You know, I've gone hungry. I know how bad that sucks. Why can't we get this done? And that's why, when it's available, the next round, because I know you were just elected, I'm going to be running for mayor to try and fix what I can in this town.
Very good. Thank you. Is anyone else here that would like to address the council? Please come forward this time. Seeing no one coming forward, again, appreciate you all being here this evening. We'll move on with our schedule. Consider unfinished business, and again, an update for the warehouse.
Yeah, the new city warehouse facility, we're being, we're very close to substantial completeness on the call-out building and the administration building, as well as the municipal garage. Utility garage, we're probably three to four weeks away there. Still working on the roof at the garage and purchasing buildings. And the solid waste building is very, it's basically almost complete. It's just acting as a, as a holding facility, a storage facility for the general contractor right now. So we're looking at asphalt, doing the rest of the asphalt out there on the 26th. So our guys are moving forward on the concrete that needs to be done and getting everything shaped up for that. Any questions?
At what point would they let us start moving stuff into these buildings, or would they just want to wait till it's done, hand us the keys? Is that how that's going to happen?
Bill, do you want to address that?
We're kind of hearing that maybe November 1st, there'll be some of the buildings turned over to us. But right now, the main building that is probably the closest and the farthest along is the solid waste building. But they are currently using that building for storage of their own supplies as the complete rest of the project. So they're not, they are not able to at this time to turn it over. But that would probably be one of the first ones, followed closely by the call-out building. Administration building is going to be not too far behind that. I mean, we're getting close to the middle of October, and they think they're going to be done by, I believe, the end of November. So there's not, there's not a whole lot of time to schedule the turning the buildings over to us between now and then.
Are we going through them as they're getting nearing completion and developing punch lists for, you know, drywall nail pop here or there and all of that kind of stuff?
Right. The buildings I mentioned, the call-out building and the administration building, we might be able to get to the municipal garage this month, but going through them this month and developing those punch lists.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Any other questions for Cannell? I consider new business, and it looks like we're going to do some trick-or-treating this year. Mr. Gary?
Okay, I think it says Debbie Leroux was here to speak, but I'm not Debbie Leroux. Although she would much better do a better job than I am. First of all, I am speaking on behalf of the Brick District, and it is for the cause of trick-or-treating. We used to do this, I think it might have been three years ago, that it was kind of abandoned and for reasons we don't really know. It was just, it was kind of changed at that time. But as we're looking and seeing how the Brick District is growing, and based on that, I do want to thank those people on the city who did help us, or departments that are on the city that kind of got us barricades to shut the streets down. Chief Myers, they had the police department down here during the autumn on the brick. So so far, it seems to me that Brick District is moving forward. Theater's coming along. And as well as that's going on, we do feel that it's a positive, and we've always felt it was a positive, to have the young people coming down and parading through the downtown with their trick-or-treat. And it's going to be Saturday this year. We still have the farmer's market going on at that day. So what are our thoughts for? And I've already spoken with Chief Meyer, and due to safety and that many kids, because last, I think over the years, it used to be like 1,500 kids up to around, because that's how much candy would give out. And so we kind of just assumed thereabouts. We don't know it'll be that many now that we've kind of abandoned over three years. But with that many children in the downtown, we started down around where the farmer's market will be. That's for the bags to be given out, and we'll take them straight up, all the way to the theater, back across the street, kind of where the Christian church is, and then back down. Those who are in the Brick District, we're going to try to, we're already, the Brick District's already given up $1,000 for candy for those who can't subsidize, to help subsidize it. The other members of the downtown will probably pay for it themselves. Those that are in the Brick District that are on the sideways, because we can't allow the kids to go down all these little areas and try to keep them in one uniform area for safety reasons, we're going to have stations out front so they can also represent themselves if they want to come down and give out kids, to the kids. So I'm asking if we can have the streets closed down for those two hours on October 31st, Halloween, and it'll be on Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00. Shouldn't interfere with too much. It's in the middle of the day, and I know kind of how action is in the downtown. And just asking if we can kind of barricade that down just for the trick-or-treaters that day, and it's going to be in the wide daylight, and I think a good safe place for bringing people to bring their kids. If there's any questions you may have about that, I'd ask if I can answer.
Yes. On the information here, it will be from 11:00 to 1:00. Is that specifically when they're?
That is as well as we can, yeah, and defined in that area. We're trying to get it, you know, if, might be a lot of kids, and trying to focus all, everybody up and down. But our goal is to kind of have it during those hours.
The letter says 10:00 to 1:30.
That's why I was questioning it, yeah.
I'm sorry. I did, I think I was, 10:00 to 1:30?
Is when the street would be closed?
Yes, yes. Probably to allow time from, to close it down and to, yeah, it's just kind of a leeway between times to get it closed down and get everybody out of the streets.
But the actual, sure.
The actual parade or of the kids, we're trying to get from 11:00 to 1:00.
I got you.
Yes.
Gary, does it have, do the kids have to go to the farmer's market locations to start? Or can they actually start at like the north end and?
No, we felt that, and Debbie and I talked about that today, and we have seen in the past, sometimes, you know, even they won't like pick up the bag from us, because we are giving out, I think we have 1,000 bags or thereabouts. If they'd have their own, sometimes because of parking situations in the downtown area, some may park up by the church or whatever, and we don't feel that it's going to be any problem for them to start where, at that area, maybe up by the theater as well. So we're not really, we're trying to, we're going to try to coax everybody to be in one area, but we just feel if we can guide everybody, and we're going to try to make sure through the newspaper and any, any ways that we can get this word out, how and to keep it, you know, keep it structured as well as we can.
Safe as we can.
Yes.
Are the, is the newspaper going to do the pictures like they've done in years past to give as part of this event?
I was at a meeting the other day, and you know, at that time-
She's shaking her head yes.
She's shaking her head. Well, I'm going to say yes. And I'm very, you know what, and it's always been awesome that they did that, and I think, and maybe, you know, that might be, and this is kind of truly, we decided to do this at the last meeting through like prodding and pushing, we decided. And so we are kind of, kind of pulling our brute straps up and trying to get this pulled off. So I haven't really got a good sense of how, you know, those of the paper feel and how we're going to do it, because it may be a good spot to start at Fulton Sun as well. You know, sometimes it, I think in the past, they have done that and got their pictures taken. I think we're going to try to coordinate that and get that worked out. And I assure you that I'll be talking to Steve Meyer the whole time to try to make sure it's up to, so that we're up to all the safety we can for the kids.
Well, we had done that, they'd done, the paper had done that for years, then they moved across the street so the kids wouldn't have to cross market.
Right. You know, the farmer's market is going on at the time, so we know that the, you know, the streets are closed right there at the courthouse, but we do have the situation of Business 54 and crossing that street. And I see that would be an issue. But I assume, I think that by talking to Chief, and I think he'd probably agree, that probably keeping them in that one block that we know there's no traffic, it would be the best.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I think it's great. I'm glad to see that come back.
I do, too.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I don't know, I really, it's trying to remember. I've been down here for 23 years and a part of that whole thing, and we've given them out for all those years, and all of a sudden, it didn't happen. And I can't remember what reasons that it was abandoned or, you know, went to the wayside. But we do want to reintroduce that. I think it's good for the community and definitely, we know it's a good, safe place for bringing kids.
Well, you can tell already that Lyle's excited at getting his uniform out.
I'm more kids. I move for approval.
I'll second.
Very good. I have a motion for approval.
Mary's second.
I second.
Okay, we got a second.
That's good.
Very good.
Thank you very much, council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further, any additional discussion of that motion? There are none, all those in favor of the motion, please say five seconds. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
Okay, that's some fun. All right.
That's the fun part, now's the bad part.
Discussion of electric rate increases that are proposed in the new budget. Who wants to take this? Daryl, are you going to lead us with that?
I will.
Okay, Bill will take it.
In like the last five years, the city's wholesale cost of electricity has gone up 40 percent. And it was either 2009 or 10. Included in that budget was a proposed 7.5 percent rate increase. But based on some purchases that we were able to make that year on the wholesale level, it was not necessary for us to implement that at that time. But as I said, since that time, our wholesale costs have gone up 40 percent. Variety of reasons. The main one is due to the formation of the Regional Transmission Organization, the MISOs of this world, that have totally upset the way we have historically purchased power. The last time we had a rate increase was in 2008, so it's been, I don't know, seven years. I guess it's going to be eight years if it takes effect in January. But the rate increase we're looking at would be about 7.5 percent, eight, 7.5 to 8 percent on the residential level. Based on a rate study that we conducted as part of the Smart Grid project, it was determined that the commercial rates were already towards the high side. So there will be, we're not proposing any rate increase on the commercial businesses. On the industrial, we're looking at 5.7 to 5.8 percent rate increase. And on the large power, we're looking at somewhere between a 5.3 and a 7.7 percent rate increase depending on the size. I do want to just point out to you that these are preliminary numbers. Daryl Caffey and I will look at and review and give consideration to other numbers and other potential formulas, but I wanted to bring this to you as these rate increases are included in the proposed 2016 budget. If we have a desire for them to take, take effect, effective with the January bill, it is something that we're going to have to deal with in the near future.
I know in the past, we've researched renewable energy grants, things of that nature, actual renewable energy sources are not cost-effective at this point, but are we still looking at anything like that?
Well, just today, Daryl and I met with a wind farm transmission provider. Some of the numbers they threw out were actually kind of attractive, but with the current contractual mix of power supply that we have, we're going to have to look at it very closely to see if it's something registered in. Anything you want to add up, follow up on that, Daryl?
On the wind?
The people we talked to today, I'd say had the best price on renewables we've talked to in a long time. I mean, they're getting close to being in the money. So we'll look at that one pretty hard.
Energy wouldn't begin flowing on that project until 2020, though. So it's nothing, but we're not, we are not short on power right now the way it is.
I mean, I guess it's probably different sizes, but what will one of those units produce in our cause?
Well, this was a large wind farm that would be-
Right, that's what we're talking, several.
Several, yes. And then we would purchase a contract for a portion of it.
It was a large wind farm actually in western Kansas.
Who would propose to put one here?
Put one here? No, it would be, the wind farm would be in western Kansas.
Okay, so we couldn't have it locally.
Because they got better wind in Kansas. I mean, it doesn't die down in western Kansas. Like, you know, here in mid-Missouri, when it's a hot August day, the wind don't blow. Lower in that part of the country, it does.
So we're looking at something to be similar to our coal-producing company, our electricity company in Illinois.
Yeah.
We wouldn't own it.
You would have, you would be a contract taker at this point.
Does that include solar, too? I mean, we could do solar maybe, but-
We've looked at some solar, but right now, the wind is a better price than the solar is.
And this company did indicate that there may be in the future a solar component to their development. But at this time, they're primarily focused on the wind. They're looking at building a line between western Kansas and Indiana.
Indiana, a DC line.
To get, to get into the, you know, we're in the MISO market, central states. PJM is the RTO on the eastern coast, and this wind generation producer wants to be able to get their energy into PJM just due to, do the market criteria. Electricity is much higher on the east coast than it is here, and they want to move it through Missouri, but as a kind of a condition of moving it through Missouri, they want to put a tap in Missouri that would put some power into the MISO footprint that we could then contract for and take delivery here.
Daryl, is there any rules or regulations ruling individuals from putting something like that around their farm or?
No, you've got the net metering bill. That's the state law that says you can't produce more than, you know, at your house if you put solar panels on. But you can be an independent power producer. This, this place has already went before the state, and I believe they've got acceptance as a utility, which is one of their hurdles, so that way they can acquire right-of-way.
Well, we've got the contract with one guy in my neighborhood that don't want to have to buy his power if he goes.
If he goes net positive, we pay the energy cost, or give him credit for the energy cost, and then they have to use it by the end of the year.
Bless you.
But as Bill said, this is one of the best proposals we've, we've heard in a while.
And it's just because the constant wind speed in Kansas. The other, one of the other proposals we heard of was from Iowa, and the wind fluctuates so much up there that, you know, in the evening hours, it's, according to the wind diagram, was pretty windy, and there was a lot of, lot of electricity being produced, but we don't need electricity in the middle of the night. We need it on the hot August afternoons, and on a hot August afternoon, the wind's not blowing, which is why the question about solar comes, kind of comes into play. A hot August sunny afternoon, that's when a solar would kind of pick up that component of it.
Don't you run into the same thing with nighttime for solar?
Right. Then that's when it gets, generally gets a little windier at night.
But you don't need as much power at night either.
This part of the, of the country this is at's been kind of nicknamed the Saudi Arabia Wind. I mean, it's got good wind.
Are there any government subsidies for those types of energy sources?
Yes, yes, right now there is.
Do you factor that in when you decide if it's cost-effective or not?
Yes.
Yes.
But those get renewed, I think, yearly, so you gotta go before Congress can get those renewed.
They're all over the country. We just travel when they have them. It's amazing.
Any other discussion on the rate increase? We'll probably draw ordinance for the next council meeting.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
What, the way I read this and understand this is that somebody using 500 is looking at an 8 percent increase?
Yes.
Somebody using 1,000 is a 5.2 percent, and somebody using 2,000 is 8.5 percent? Is it, is that scale graduated?
For years and years, the philosophy was the more you use, the less per kilowatt hour you should pay. Okay? But in the last probably 10 years, the philosophy has switched to somebody that's only using 500 kilowatts a month, they really have no way to conserve. 500 kilowatts a month would be a single couple with a refrigerator and a TV and a few lights and doing what they can to not waste.
That's my goal.
That's your goal. Whereas somebody that's using, you know, 6,000 kilowatt hours a month, they have, at a residential level, which is a lot of electricity. They have the opportunity to shut things off and conserve and cut back, whereas the 500 kilowatt consumer, they really can't do too much to cut back and save anything. So the emphasis in the last 10 years is to- So the, the emphasis in the last 10 years is to close the gap between the, the cost that the 500 kilowatt user uses and, you know, 10 years ago, the 6,000 kilowatt user was down here, but to bring that cost of a 6,000 kilowatt user up
More you waste.
to where it's closer to the 500.
Are you still tracking your house like you were?
Yeah.
How successful have you been at that? Or do you wanna share that?
Works really well. It works better in the summertime than it does in wintertime, but I could run dehumidifiers and I figure that same costing me probably a buck and a half a day to run the dehumifier in the basement.
What, what's an average user in, in our town?
1,200 kilowatt hours.
So we're talking somewhere between 5.2 and 8 and a half percent, probably closer to 5.2.
Yes, sir.
5 and a half, 6 percent. Well, and the other thing, if, if you consider the way we purchase power, the more we purchase, the more expensive it gets for us typically, if you look at Peaking Power and some of that sort of thing. So wouldn't, shouldn't our rate structure kinda be set up the same way?
You could look at it that way, yes.
Now, supply and demand, right? The more you demand, higher the price goes if the supply isn't there.
It's also easier us, easier for us to have a known quantity to be able to purchase that way as opposed to unpredictable vendor or family that is up and down and all over the place. That's really what makes it hard for us to purchase the right amount of power.
And we live, Daryl, you might wanna come back up, talk about the day ahead market versus real time?
Yep.
And why we do what we do.
While the individuals may be unpredictable and their loads may vary, the employees at the power plant do a great job scheduling. I mean, if, if it's a, the hour's supposed to be 36 and that, that's what the real value was, if they're off by two megawatts, they really don't like that. They call that a crooked letter.
Do we, how much waste do we have out there?
Not very much. I mean, talking to TEA, the guys at the power plant, they're one of the best schedulers they got. I mean, they, they spend a lot of time and if they get a two, they don't like that. I mean, they kinda kid each other. Hey, you messed up. You got a two. So we do that, and then we also got the gas turbine out there. So in the market, when they're expecting day ahead prices to be high, we'll hold, you know, five or six megawatts out of the market. If TEA's thinking the real time will come in cheaper, we'll use that turbine as an insurance policy. And most of the time, it does not run. The, the real time will come in lower, so-
What kinda cranny those guys have to go through more than to do that?
We've, we've had TEA come up here and talk to them. You know, I've worked with them. Craig just spent a week in Florida with TEA going through their stuff and then came back and showed the guys what he learned there. But they, they really work hard. They, they really do, trying to get that scheduled. I mean, they're, they're more accurate than the weatherman. They're, they're good.
And they have, they look at, we schedule everything day ahead, so we really don't know what is gonna happen. But they have to look at the weather, they have to look at the, the, both the temps and humidity, they look at the day of the week, they look at what's happened on other days that's happened this time. They do a lot of analysis in order to hit that schedule as close as they can.
And they watch, they watch the real time prices go up. Like yesterday, central Missouri stayed pretty good. I think the highest hour we had was like $60. But south Texas in MISO was $1,500 yesterday. And in the Minnesota region, it was negative.
How many guys you got organized right now?
Uh, they're rotating through. I think there's seven.
I believe that's correct.
Seven.
And they're all cross-trained with each other's?
Yes, sir. All of them start the turbine and all of them can schedule.
And that's a, they're, they're 24/7, right?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody's there.
Somebody's there.
That's awesome.
But that's, that's how we're working it right now.
You get to talk to them in the mornings when the electricity goes off and you call out there.
Yeah, and they dispatch the other city crews at night and stuff if somebody has a water leak or something like that. Did that answer the question?
Sure did.
We need to, need to take any action on this?
No, just kinda, it's on the agenda for discussion purposes this evening. We'll draw an ordinance for the next council meeting. All right.
Of course, it would also be appropriate, if you think it would really be missed to vote here, to speak out on that.
I think we're doing our due diligence of always trying to find the best rates.
And I, I hesitate to ask this question, but is this enough? I mean, we're, I know we're struggling. You said purchase power's going up 40 percent. I don't wanna see it go higher, but we're gonna be able to avoid another increase in a few years.
We will do all we can to make this work.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good. Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions. Consider Resolution 3244. The last councilman, Vaughn, who sent that. It's a resolution to approve a contract with, a contractor for the wastewater treatment plan improvements. Richard, if you'd take that?
Resolution 3244. A resolution authorizing the mayor on the behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute, to execute a contract with Lehman Construction Company, California, Missouri, for the wastewater treatment plan improvements in the main bid of $8,875,592 to sign all necessary documents and establish an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3244 at tonight's council meeting.
Second. Very good. Thank you. Have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 3244. Is any discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Thank you. We'll get that project underway. Been a long time coming.
Yep.
About five years or so. Okay, uh, we'll now consider first reading ordinances. We'll ask Council Shiverdecker to introduce Bill Number 1432, which is a question as to whether or not we'll add the, or propose the stormwater parts and rec tax, sales tax for the April 5th ballot.
Yes.
Councilman Shiverdecker?
Bill Number 1432, an ordinance for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the City of Fulton, Missouri during the next general municipal election date of April 5th, 2016, the question of whether to impose a sales tax of one-half of 1 percent for stormwater control in local parks and recreation. I make a motion that we advance Bill Number 1432 for a second reading at our next scheduled meeting.
Second. Very good. Thank you. Have a motion in a second to advance Bill Number 1432. Any discussion of that motion? Any questions?
When is the effective date that it does pass?
First of October.
Of 16?
Yes.
How come? That long?
It takes effect one quarter after the quarter in which it's elected. So it'd be April, May, June.
Right.
June, July, August. I believe, I believe it's October 1st, right? October 1st.
I have a motion in a second to advance Bill 1432. There's not any further discussion. Call for a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Again, for first reading, Bill Number 1433 is a, uh, bill that authorizes a contract to be executed with the county collector. And Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present 1433, first reading, title only?
Yes. Uh, Bill Number 1433, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract in the amount of $5,000, between the City of Fulton, Missouri and the Collector and County Commissioner of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collection of taxes, with the contract period commencing upon approval through June of 2019. I make a motion that, uh, Bill Number 1433, uh, be read at the next meeting for second reading.
Second. Good. I have a motion in a second to advance Bill Number 1433 for second. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
On the attached letter, it says, "Section 3, change the county collector's compensation from $3,000 per year to $6,000 per year." And we're going for $5,000?
That says?
Um, Courtney called over, better reduced.
Oh, from what the letter says. Good job, Courtney.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Very good. Hearing none, further discussion. All those in favor of advancing Bill 1433, please signify as saying yes.
Yes, yes.
All those opposed, no. 1433 will be considered next meeting. We'll now consider second reading ordinances. And, uh, Bill Number 1431 is an ordinance that authorizes our use of the Revenue Bonds Direct Loan Program. And Councilman Vaughn, if you'd please present 1431 by title only, second reading.
Bill Number 1431, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton to sign all necessary documents in relation to the 2015 Missouri Sewer System Revenue Bond Direct Loan Program. I make a motion to place Bill 1431 for a third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Second. Very good. I have a motion in a second to advance 1431 for third reading tonight. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please can, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Bill Number 1431, 31 will now be considered for third reading. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present that?
Bill Number 1431, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to the 2015 State of Missouri Sewer System Revenue Bond Direct Loan Program. I make a motion to place Bill 1431 for final passage at this council.
Second. Very good. I have a motion in a second to consider 1431 for final passage. Any further mo, any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of advancing 1431 to final passing, final consideration, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. You've heard Bill 1431 presented three times. It's now time for final consideration. As the clerk reads a roll, if you'd signify your vote by yes or no.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Cantle?
Yes.
Mr. Shiloh?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven affirmative, one absentee.
I do not have any appointments for the night's reading. Announcements? Any other?
I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Dizmer on the Purple Heart City topic we discussed last meeting. We are gonna move forward with the proclamation. He will send one to two individuals to come present a plaque. Um, and, you know, we wanna extend an invitation to the community, to all of our veterans, Purple Heart recipients as well and their family members to attend. We're looking at presenting it at the beginning of next meeting, which will be the 27th. So we will move forward with that.
During the work session or at the start of the meeting?
Start of the meeting, regular meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else you'd like for any more council?
What if, I'd like this thing we got from Todd.
Sure.
We gonna do anything with that, or can we extend an invitation to him to attend our work session so we can discuss what he's talking about in this letter?
Sure, we can do that. Yeah. And, uh, I'm, uh, seeing as I just saw it this evening, we'll, we'll take a look at it, consider it. Again, uh, consider, appreciate the, uh, your desire to continue to talk and, uh, we will give it all consideration and we'll get back to you on it. And, uh, yes, Mr. Todd, if you'd like to join us next, excuse me, next Tuesday evening, you're more than welcome to attend. Anybody else?
No, he had the same thing I had, so it's fine.
I'm sorry?
We was, had the same question, so never mind.
Okay. Very good. I do not have a need for an executive session, so that leaves one, uh, one motion left.
Motion to adjourn.
Very good.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for adjournment. All those in favor, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, stay.